Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh two, and I will now call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. As a reminder, tonight's meeting is a special meeting. We have a number of agenda items at a special meeting. We can't change anything, so we're just going to jump into the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of June twenty six, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. I second.
Thank you both. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike. Any abstentions? Motion carries, and so I can, I can hear Mike, and thank you, Mike. You're able to hear us?
Aye, clear.
Perfect. Awesome. All right. So the next item on the agenda is a resolution, and this is a waiver of bid requirements and an approval of contract award for Snyder Civil Construction LLC. Our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, is here with us this evening to, to go over it. I'll just touch upon this briefly first. As you all know, we've been dealing with a flooding emergency at Job's Pond since, since early spring, mid-March to, to April. And throughout this time, the town has reached out to a number of federal and state agencies for support. The USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service awarded the town with a grant to fund seventy-five percent of this project. And then in late, early June, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection via the Bond Commission awarded the town a grant for the remaining twenty-five percent of the project. And the cost of the project was estimated to be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to de-water Job's Pond. And that would involve constructing a pipeline from the pond to the Connecticut River and pumping water from the pond into the Connecticut River. In order to do this, a number of things had to happen. We had to have NRCS, who I want to thank for all of their work, helped to develop the specs in the back end of the agreement, which the request for proposal that the town sent out was a hundred ninety-eight pages. It was, it was quite, quite the undertaking to compile this. Our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, has been instrumental on that. I want to, I want to, before we get into this, I want to acknowledge Ryan's work and all the effort that he's put in behind the scenes on this because he's really done a great. How many times have you walked the trail now?
Five.
Five, five times. And Ryan's learned his lesson because the last time he brought shorts, and I said, now that, he's learning. So it's been hot. I've walked the trail, I think, three times myself now, and it's, it gets really hot out there. We've walked through rainstorms. We've walked through heat waves, and, and we've also walked the other side of the culvert to the Connecticut River. We have really, really explored, explored this trail, explored this path, and, and to get here has been quite the undertaking. I want to thank Governor Lamont. I want to thank Deep and all the permitting that went into getting this through the state. The state had to sign an emergency waiver to allow us to pump into the river, to pump this water into the river. Also, we had to go through inland, the Inland Wetlands Commission, who also had to approve to allow us to do this. In addition, I want to thank the property owners that we've been working with. We've been working with, I want to thank the YMCA, the Camp Ingersoll property that's there. YMCA could not have been more helpful, from the director to their, to their CEO, to everyone involved over there that really have gone above and beyond. Eversource has worked with us continually on this, and I'm pleased to say that we have the access agreement that was recorded on the land records today for the airline trail. So between the Y and then the Eversource with the airline trail, that's two-thirds of the access agreement. And I believe there's one property to go, and we are, we are very, very close to an agreement. I expect, I'm waiting on confirmation on that, I hope. We have done, the town continues to do everything it can to work with this property owner to alleviate any concerns that they may have. And so as we mentioned, as I mentioned, we have, we had seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete this project. And we had three contractors that were identified by NRCS that could potentially do this project. And we sent the request for proposals out to all three of them. One of them decided not to bid on the project. And then we received two bids. We received two bids last week. The first bid came in, and you're going to see that in just a little bit. I think it was Snyder Civil Engineering came in at seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars for the project, which was under the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar number that we needed. The second bid came in at one point one, over one point one million dollars. And I just want to acknowledge that had, had, had we not gotten this, this low bid, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be able, this project would not be able to move forward. And every step of the way, a lot of things have had to happen in order to be here today. This has been, at every step of the way, a, a fight and a struggle, and there's been a lot of people, a lot of people that have gotten us to this point. And I just, I know, I know the residents of Job's Pond, there's many residents here this evening. I thank you for being here. I know you guys have been through hell the past, past four months, five months, and I'm glad that this work can finally, we're on the precipice of this work being able to, to begin. But I just, just want to acknowledge that there has been, it's been a great undertaking to get to this point, and I'm pleased, I'm pleased that we're here. So with that, Ryan, do you want to come up? We have a resolution before you. In order to award the contract now, because of the exigency of the situation, we are not following standard procurement procedures, which would be a more competitive bidding process. But because of the emergency nature of this, the federal government has waived their bidding requirements. And so the state of Connecticut has indicated that we can also follow suit, and that is why, that is what the resolution before you is doing. So do you want, where else did I get?
I mean, you, you covered most everything. The only things I think I could add are minor details to the project, such as the closure of the airline trail that's going to need to happen.
For how long?
For the duration of the pumping. So from setting up the, the piping out there on the road, we're going to have excavators up there. There's going to be heavy equipment, trucks, trailers. It's going to be too dangerous for people to be there. So they're going to need to set up trail closed signs at the YMCA property. I, I mean, people would need to come out of the woods or butler, but we're going to still need to account for anyone that could end up on the trail from that end. There's going to be a trail closed sign. And then at the other end, on the other side of the trestle bridge at Middle Hatum, where they're going to trail off of the, the trail to go to the culvert under sixty-six, there's going to have to be trail closed signs there. And then we're also going to close the parking lot on Middle Hatum Road, and the contractor is going to be using that as a lay down area to get the bulk of the pipe in and out and, and material needed to get across. Now, there's also going to be a road closure to through traffic on Breezy Corner Road. With the, the airline trail, there's a, there's a limitation. We cannot dig into the airline trail due to it being an old railroad that was there for any contaminants that may be in the soil. So without being able to do that, and how the trail dives down into Breezy Corner Road, we would not be able to start digging in time to get that, that pipe underneath the road far enough to where, you know, you could end up having traffic go over the pipe. So the only feasible option really is to, other than to build a bridge for the pipe, which would have added costs that would have put us out of the budget, is going to be to close that road. We'll put closed to through traffic signs at Middle Hatum Road and then down at Job's Pond Road. So anyone that lives on Breezy Corner can obviously access their house, but to go one way or another, they're going to have to go around a Penfield Hill Road or Job's Pond Road, I mean.
Is this the same, where, is this the same place we're putting it now than we did when we did it last time?
Yeah, so it's the same spot as nineteen eighty-four, but in nineteen eighty-four, there was another trestle bridge over Breezy Corner Road that the, the piping went over. So.
Do we have an idea how long the pumping will take?
Right now, in the, in the contract, we have fifty days. We don't expect it to take that long, but we also don't know what rainfall is going to do the month we're pumping. So we're hoping this is done somewhere in the realm of twenty to thirty days. But it, it could be quicker. It could be worse, depending on the weather.
It's also going to take a little bit of time to construct the pipe. I don't know. Has Snyder indicated how long that, the construction process will take?
At, at least two weeks to get everything together. But I don't have a definitive schedule as we didn't award the contract yet. That wasn't a part of the original bid submission. That's just going by conversations I've had with them on the walkthroughs.
How high is the water now compared to normal level? What's it, what's it receded to, or what's it at right now?
It, it looked like it only came down about two feet since, since April, I would say. And it's still got to be, I think, twelve to fourteen feet above normal levels. Would that?
I see nodding heads.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds about right, Ryan. Does anyone want to move the resolution?
No, I'll take it. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Request for waiver of bid requirements and approval of contract agreement, Snyder Civil Construction LLC. Whereas due to excessive rainfall in twenty twenty-three into early twenty twenty-four, Job's Pond water level surged to the point of flooding homes since early twenty twenty-four, creating a public emergency. And whereas the Town of Portland received a grant for the entire funding from USDA NRCS, which was co-sponsored by Connecticut Deep to perform the emergency de-watering of Job's Pond and pipeline construction in an effort to relieve flooding. And whereas due to the public exigency, and in order to mitigate further delays, USDA NRCS waived the competitive solicitation requirement. And whereas USDA NRCS came up with a solution to remove approximate level of water from the pond and provided a list of three contractors that could provide the work required. And whereas requests for proposals were sent to the three vendors provided to the town by the pump and piping suppliers that assisted the USDA NRCS in the design of the project. And whereas one vendor chose not to bid, and the other two vendors did provide proposals through the process noted above for the emergency pumping of Job's Pond. And whereas both proposals receive or review by the Town of Portland along with USDA NRCS and encompass the full scope of work. And whereas the lower of the two proposals submitted was Snyder Civil Construction LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that in the best interest of the town pursuant to section twelve oh eight subsection seven of the Portland Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of section twelve oh eight of the Portland Charter as pertains to utilizing Snyder Civil Construction LLC as the contractor to perform the emergency pumping of Job's Pond. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the First Selectman, Ryan J. Curley, to act on behalf of the Town of Portland to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland a contract with Snyder Civil Construction LLC, five ninety-five Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, zero six four eight zero, for RFP number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, Job's Pond Emergency Pumping. Total base bid contract prior to change orders is approximately seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made. Motion seconded. Any further discussion?
No, you, you answered the only question that really that.
Actually, I guess the.
You answered the, one of the main questions I had is, did the relevant authorities, they were comfortable with the bid waiving?
And they are.
And I would assume, Ryan, that this is going to be complicated, but there's no change orders that are anticipated, I would assume, doing this, so.
No, the, the technical specs covered most everything. I mean, it boils down to a relatively simple project. Set up pumps, set up, you know, the, the suction area with a delineation in the pond, and then pipe it all the way out to a discharge point, and then start pumping. So I don't anticipate any, any hiccups in, in that process.
So I have one other question somewhat related to this. I think every forty years, we have a flood there. Eighty-four, nine, two. So in another forty years, when this happens, what kind of plans would it be to maybe mitigate this, to try to solve the underlying problem? I know it's a once in a generation thing, but what are some ideas that have been thrown around? What suggestions?
So, you know, I, I've, I've heard an idea to, to set a pipe up at a certain elevation. That way, when the pond does get to a certain elevation, the water would have a way to go out to the river. It would involve several properties that, that you would pipe jack this pipe underneath these properties and through them. But it, it would involve a significant amount of engineering, and then obviously every property owner to agree to that plan. It's, it's just been discussed with, I think, one or two of the property owners that, that have an idea for where this could go. But outside of that, it hasn't gone any further.
We also have to figure out the funding. I have heard from NRCS that they would be interested in, in sponsoring that project, which would again cover, if approved, seventy-five percent of the cost of a permanent solution before the pond. But then the question would be on the remaining twenty-five percent. And so, you know, certainly I think we're all interested in solving this, not just temporarily, but permanently. So we'd have to look at that after this. Right now, it's. Get through this, but I think everybody wants to take a good look at this after and, and look for a, a permanent solution. But we'd also have to kind of figure out what the cost would be as well. Is anyone, any of the selectmen online? Does anyone have any questions or comments before we, we move the resolution or we vote on it?
Aye, all good, Ryan.
Good.
I'm good.
Great. All right. Thank you both. All right. So if we're all set, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the request for waiver of bid requirements and approval of contract agreement, Snyder Civil Construction LLC, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. All right. The next item is an action on the revised non-union pay plan fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Temporary substitute building official. Now, our building official is on leave at the moment. And so because of that, the town is in need of some part-time building official work. So that's what we're doing, is we're setting an hourly rate for a temporary building official to conduct work while our building official is, is out. So that's the only change to the pay plan, but we need to have that in order to, in order for there not to be a stop of work in the land use office while Pete is out.
Need a motion for that?
I do.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a temporary building official.
Well, just the, the, the.
Pay plan.
Just the pay plan in general? Okay. The updated pay plan.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion on this?
How long? How long do we anticipate it to?
Hopefully, eight weeks, maybe, ten weeks. Yeah, not, not too long. Maybe last actually. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. All right. The next item is another big ticket item for the Town of Portland, and this is something that I know this board has been very, very interested in pursuing, as well as previous boards of selectmen for years. And this is in regards to becoming water independent in the Town of Portland and being able to separate ourselves from our current agreement with MDC, which is set to expire in January of twenty twenty-six, which is coming up very quickly in less than a year and a half. That agreement with, with MDC is set to expire, and currently the town receives about two-thirds of our water supply roughly from, from MDC. And what we've seen over the years is, as MDC has been forced to raise their rates, those rates get passed to the Town of Portland, and the Town of Portland in turn has to pass those increases to our water customers and, and anyone really who's using the water in the Town of Portland is paying for these rates. And so because the town has been so fortunate over the years with our geology in town, we received a grant partially for that reason from DPH, which was, I think, from the Bond Commission, from Senator Needleman and Representative Carpino, which was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that the town was awarded in two, twenty twenty to find our own water source or to explore our own water source. In twenty twenty-one, we started an RFQ, RFP process, and we went through that. And GZA, Hydrogeology out of Glastonbury, was selected as the hydrogeologist firm that would be working with the town to explore finding our own water source. And if you recall, last summer, after, after months of surveying and, and data analysis, we drilled two test wells in an area just north of our Portland recreational complex. And the deeper of those two wells that we drilled really was a home run for the town as far as the quality of the water and the potential output of the water, where GZA estimated that the water would be able to produce one to, one to two million gallons a day, potentially, of clean, of very clean drinking water. And so over, since that time, since July of last year, GZA worked on a, on a final preliminary engineering report that was prepared and submitted to the town in March of this year, where they identified the next steps that would need to happen in order for the town to continue to pursue this. And then in June of this year, we had a very positive meeting with the Department of Public Health, where DPH indicated that the town would be eligible for what's called DWSRF funds, Drinking Water State Revolving Funds for this project. And it was a very encouraging meeting, where DPH basically said that they, they saw that this was a viable path forward to us. Now, we still, then we had to go back to GZA and tell them it had to be within certain numbers. And the other thing is, we're up against the clock. That's the biggest thing. The reason why we're here tonight is because of the time constraints that we're under with MDC. MDC has indicated to us that they are not looking for a short-term extension. They, they don't really want to continue a short-term extension. They want to have a long-term, maybe another thirty-year lease with the Town of Portland, a thirty-year agreement. And that's not something that the town, I think, is in the best interest for the town to do. Because as soon as we do that, all of this work, finding our own water source, is, is really null and void for another thirty years. And so I personally believe it's in the town's best interest to continue our pursuit of water independence. GZA has come up with a proposal that would get us to the next steps of the project, and that is listed out. There's a, basically, they came up with a number of items that would have to be done. The, the biggest item is we need to construct a production well, a twelve-inch production well at the recreational complex, and it would have to be done this summer, like late, we're talking late August. They would drill this well, and we would be doing pump testing of this new production well this fall, late this summer and early fall during the dry season. Because what DPH looks for when they do their analysis is they want to see how there's groundwater level monitoring that needs to be done, and it really needs to be done during the driest period of the year in order to be effective. So that's really why we're up against the clock here. And so in, in addition to that, there's other permitting that needs to happen, the shore pump testing, there's, there's an aqua. pump testing, there's, uh, there's an aqua, aquifer protection zone delineation, there's, there's a lot of diversion permits and reports, and so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of projects, and it's all spelled out here. And the total cost for this next phase of the project from GZA is $1,192,000. And that would get us the twelve-inch production well, the well-developed monitoring, uh, perimeter wells, short-term pump testing, long-term constant-rate pump testing, water quality testing, diversion permits and reports, project management and meetings, and then there's fifty thousand in contingency. This is a, from Ryan's work, and again, I want to thank Ryan for working with GZA to get these numbers in line with, with where we need to be. Now, this, I want to stress, is just the next phase of the project. There would be another phase of this project, and it would be estimated to be around $5 million. Now, that fund would be eligible under the DWSRF funds, and what we would need to do, most likely, is we would need to put a question on the ballot for election, a referendum vote, this November as well. So we would have another question on the ballot this year, where we would be voting on moving forward with this water project. And I think it's important that we get the word out on what we're trying to do, because ultimately, we're here, the Board of Selectmen, to do what the town wants us to do. The town has indicated that they want to low, potentially lower water rates, or at least control the increase in rates that currently, right now, we have no control over. And so, this would allow us to really control our own destiny. Now, it is a big number that we're talking about today, um, one point two million dollars approximately, and we're going to talk a little bit about how we would, how would, we would break down those costs and how the town would pay for that. But I want to stress that if the town does move forward with this plan, currently, right now, we're paying over $800,000 a year to G, to, not to GZA, to MDC, to buy water. Whereas, if we were to finance the cost of construction, constructing the pump house, we might be able to do that for $300,000 a year, maybe even less. So, from a business standpoint, we could potentially be saving over a half a million dollars a year.
And that's now on a fixed number. When the number increases, the savings will increase as well.
Correct. So practically, we're, I'm asking this, the town and this board to con, to consider spending money now because of the great deal of savings that we, we would enjoy in the long run if this is successful. And so, a great deal amount of work has gone into this. Again, Ryan's been instrumental on this, and GZA has been very helpful, working with the town to get the numbers right. In order to do this, what I'm proposing today in a resolution, now, there's a, there's a couple resolutions, there's three, actually. Uh, one is, we have to set a, uh, we would need to hold a public hearing. Then, we would need to, this board would need to recommend an appropriation and, and bond authorization for construction and permitting of a new production well within the town of Portland. And then, we would have to have a resolution to call a special town meeting as well on this. And so, this would be subject to a public vote in order to move forward. With, with this plan, what we would be doing is, what I'm proposing is, I am proposing that we take the town, take a bank note in the amount of $499,000 to be paid back through the water department, through our water customers, would pay back the cost of this, of this loan. And then, the remaining funds would be $780,000, which I am suggesting that we fund via supplemental appropriation from fund, from town fund balance in order to accomplish this. I wish I had another way to do this, but it's the only way that we have in order to hit the timeline targets that we need. There's no, there's no other solution. We have vetted this proposal through bond council, as well as our, uh, town auditors as well. Both have told us that it's a viable solution. Bond council wrote the resolutions that are before you, so, uh, they have been blessed by them. And I do have an email from, uh, our auditor, who, who does say in an email that he believes that using town reserves for a project such as this is prudent, in that it is expected to yield long-term financial benefits for the town. So, I, I think that's as good of a blessing as you can get from an auditor in this situation. Um, but, uh, I guess I'll invite Ryan up now to, to talk more about it and, and answer the technical questions on the project.
So I, um, I'll start on this one. Thank you, Ryan. That was a, that was a great summary for where we're at right now. Um, I do want to start, we did submit a well-site suitability application back in May of this year, and, uh, although I don't have the formal response, I was able to get a, a email response in writing, um, saying that the Portland well site has been deemed acceptable. All they're doing is they're pending, um, final approval from the authorized signatory, which is the commissioner. So, it, it's on their desk. Everything is, is approved as far as the boots-on-the-ground, uh, people at Department of Public Health. Um, so that, that, um, will help us to, to feel good about, you know, where we're going to be drilling this well. Um, I should have that finalized and, and accepted sometime very soon, before we're drilling. Um, and then, this contract that, um, we had, uh, we had put together with GZA is an open-book time and material contract. So, we have a lot of control over the budget on this contract, and every, the 1.192 is a not-to-exceed price. Um, there's a lot included on this, and each, each invoice that they submit, they need to submit payroll. We have hourly rates on all the employees. Uh, the markup on the subcontractors is no more than five percent. That's per the state contract. So we're using state contract to extend their, their original contract. And then, the Department of Public Health, in order to stay eligible for the DWSRF funds, um, needed all of these requirements that GZA did not want to put into the contract, but I told them, if the, if these requirements are not in, and, and the Department of Public Health does not approve the contract, this project is, is not going to go anywhere, and we're basically not going to be able to hire them. Um, the only reason, you know, to continue would be to stay eligible for the funds, as Ryan had said. That way, we could get this project to the end, you know, next year. Um, so yeah, there's, it's a big number, but we have a lot of control. This is not just, uh, they're going to bill us 1.192. Um, they're going to have to submit invoices. They're going to have to prove that a lot of this money was spent, um, which is good for, for us. So it, it potentially will come in a lot less. I think their numbers, some of these numbers are a little inflated for unknowns. So if things go smoothly, uh, potentially, a lot less, but that's yet to be determined.
All right. Questions?
Not, not a question other than just to ver, you know, just to, um, make sure I'm accurate. My, my memory is good, but I think another important note here, we talk about, based on the current rates, about a half a million dollars a year in, in savings by implementing this long-term. And that's in-year savings, even when you're looking at paying, um, you know, paying the, the bond that we would have to take out to do that. Um, what that also doesn't count is the additional savings based on the proposed costs from MDC, based on the preliminary discussions, where right now, they have the reserve, the water, they hold in reserve for us, and we have to purchase that 146 million gallons a year. Um, that's about, again, sixty percent of what we use. They are looking to put that requirement up for us to basically buy a hundred percent of our water needs from them. That would increase the cost by about $481,000, when we agree on the calculations. You talk, that would be about another twenty-five percent increase on our customer. So, when we're looking at a half a million dollar savings, that's very, very conservative, based on where MDC is looking to go in the next contract.
The only thing I'll, I'll say, too, is, it's, it's feast or famine, as we know. I mean, now, we're going to the voters this year with a lot of decisions to make that involve a lot of money. But, you know, the reality is, as you said earlier, Ryan, that our water users are looking for a way to plan what their bills are going to be. I think the town is looking for a way to plan what their bills are going to be, because we never know from year to year, years past, MDC would jump out pretty significantly, year over year. We also, I would assume that the majority, if not all, of our municipal offices and schools and everything else are water users. And the other thing is, you know, we've seen recently in town meetings that there, there is a significant number of folks in town that believe that Portland is a small town and should remain that way, and I don't disagree. However, we all are seeing that prices are continuing to increase. One of the ways that we can help offset that is to draw, entice new businesses to come to town. And our major business industrial area in Portland is also within this water system. So it, I would think that that would help a number of different ways, not just the water users, but the town offices as water users, but also the ability to entice other businesses to come to town. So, you know, I, I just, I want to say my piece, because I believe that it's important for people to look at each of these issues we have coming up for their unique perspectives. And I think you've done a lot of work, as has Ryan over there, on, on making this happen, and I, I really think we have to do this. I mean, I'm old enough to remember when we shut down the reservoir. Um, you know, and at that point in time, it was either build a filtration facility, and, you know, hindsight's 2020. It seemed like a lot of money back then, and, and hindsight, maybe not so much. But when we gave up control of that reservoir, we gave up cost control of our water, and it's, it, this is a great opportunity to get that back.
And John, to, to give you one more data point on that, in the last, in the three years prior to the pandemic, we were seeing increases. The, um, the combined rate of those increases over those three years was 42.79%. And the impact that that's had, those increases have had, is that, um, our water, total water cost to MDC is about fifty percent, or just shy of fifty percent of our budget. When it was twenty-five percent of our budget, if the cost of water went up four bucks, you could raise everyone's rate one dollar and stay even. Now, it's, you know, if it goes up four bucks, you got to raise it two, right? We're in that spiral, where it gets more, you know, re, our, our ability to control those costs is reduced. So, this is a home run, especially given the predicted quantity and the tested quality of the water that we're looking at.
And the proximity to the system.
And the proximity to the system. It's about as efficient.
You're on town property, and you're, you're very, very close to the main line, so.
Yeah. Couldn't beat the location.
What I like about it, too, is, once again, this, what we're talking about here would be subject to a special town meeting. As I said, we're here to do what the town wants us to do. The town has indicated this is a path forward, and we all have done a lot of work and, and think that it's a viable path forward. So I think that a special town meeting, if approved, would be a good indication of, of a referendum question on the ballot as well, because we, if, if one does move forward, we need that referendum to pass, too. We can't do one without the other. And, and so this is, and I also want to talk about, the reason why we're doing a supplemental appropriation is because we, we just got these numbers. The, we did not have these numbers back in January and February, when we were compiling the budget. This, this is, uh, it's taken a lot of time and effort to get these numbers in line and to get the approvals from DPH, or the, the blessing that we can move forward with this. Had we known that we were going to need, you know, this much money at budget time, then we would have been able to, to make some, some different choices with our budget. But that's why we're here. We don't have a choice, and it's either we move forward or we don't, but this is the only way that we have to move forward, given the timelines that we're under.
I agree. I mean, this is an easy one. This is an easy decision to make, I think, to put out to our, our-
Do you want to have a motion, Ryan, on this?
Well, there's three, there's three, so I would like a motion for the, for the public hearing first.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Legal notice, public hearing, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland, Connecticut, shall hold a public hearing on August seventh, 2024, at the Portland Middle School Auditorium, 93 High Street, Portland, at 615, to obtain public, public comments and questions regarding the proposal to authorize the supplemental appropriations of $1.279 million for the construction and permitting of a new production well within the town of Portland, including a transfer of $780,000 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to line item 01-093-000-90006, Transfer Out Other, Public Asset, Public Access, also through the Zoom link A-W-W-W down Portland.
All right. Motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion on the public hearing?
Nope.
All right. See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the, uh, resolution for the board's approval. We, we need to have the board approve this recommendation, and I'd like somebody to move this as well.
I would be happy to move that.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Uh, make a motion that we approve the resolution titled Resolution Recommending an Appropriation and Bond Authorization for the Construction and Permitting of a New Production Well Within the Town of Portland, whereas the Town of Portland, known as the Town, continues to work towards its goal of water independence and the continuation of providing quality water supply to all town water users. And whereas, a well site has been located at the Gospel Lane Portland Recreational Complex, and whereas, to meet certain timeline requirements, the installation of a twelve-inch production well, yield and quality tests, and related permitting are all aspects of the next phase of the projects that must be completed by the end of the year 2024. And whereas, GZA, Geo-Environmental Inc. has provided a contract amendment for $1,192,000 to bid 2022-07B using terms of DAS Contract 18PSX0153 before additional change orders. And whereas, the town is in need of $1,279,000 for the project, including, but not limited to, engineering and professional fees, closing costs, legal fees, financial advisor costs, and project contingency. And whereas, the project accounting will be in Fund 37 Water Development Fund, and whereas, it is anticipated that up to $499,000 of the project will be funded from the proceeds of a bank loan, and the remainder will be funded by $780,000 allocation from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to Fund 37 Water Development Fund. And whereas, an increase in appropriation would be needed for the general fund, line number, excuse me, 01-093-000-90006, Transfer Out Other in the amount of $780,000. Be it resolved that the Portland Board of Select, uh, Selectmen hereby approves a supplemental appropriation of $1,279,000 for the construction and permitting of a new production well within the town, known as the project, including a transfer of $780,000 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to line item 01-093-000-90006, Transfer Out Other. The appropriation may be expended for site improvements, design, construction, and drilling costs, engineering and professional fees, inspection, permitting, evaluation, and surveying costs, materials, equipment, purchase costs, legal fees, financing costs, interest expense, untimary borrowings, and other costs related to the project. The appropriation shall include any federal, state, or other grants, grants and aid received for the project. The Board of Selectmen or a, a building committee, if established, is authorized to determine the particulars of the project. The Board of Selectmen may reduce or modify the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation may be expended on the project as so reduced or modified. Further resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town finance part of the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds or notes in the amount not to exceed $499,000, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received for the project.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Discussion on this resolution. I know we've talked about it. Any, any- Any questions?
I think it makes sense.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously, thank you all. And there's one more resolution, and that is to call a special town meeting.
I'll take it. I move the resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated July 23rd, 2024, resolution to call a special town meeting, whereas the Board of Selectmen has approved a supplemental appropriation of $1,279,000 for the construction and permitting of a new production well within the town called the project, including a transfer of $780,000 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to line item number 01-093-0006, Transfer Out Other. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has approved the issuance of the town's bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $499,000 to finance part of the appropriation, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received for the project. Be resolved that the attached detailed appropriation and bonding resolution for the project, the resolution, is hereby approved and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on August 7, 2024, in accordance with the attached warning of special town meeting, which is also hereby approved. A copy of the full text of the resolution shall be available for public inspection at the town clerk's office.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously, thank you all. So just again, the public hearing will be held on August 7 at 6:15 PM in the Portland Middle School Auditorium, followed by a special town meeting at 6:40 PM. And then, following that, we'll have our Board of Selectmen meeting will be held at the Portland Middle School Auditorium on August 7 at 7 PM. And so, with that, we have one request of funds of excess tax payments, a refund?
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payment for Hyundai Lease Titling Trust for $444.05.
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries. All right, next up and last, before we adjourn, is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Could you just come up and state your name and address, please?
Ellen Mantle, 6 Jobsgate 1, Portland. A couple of questions regarding the pumping. We're hoping that we'll be able to get a copy of the Snyder proposal, I'm assuming that would be available for us to view, and we also need to know when they're going to be able to start setting up. Now that it's been approved, will it be possible for them to start setting up right away? I know there's a third party that has not yet signed their easement, but the setup could start at the pond, and they're at the far end of that. There's going to be a lot of work that has to be done at the pond. Will they be able to start setting that up right away? And what is the size of the pump that they're planning on using? I know originally it was discussed that the pump would be approximately 5,000 gallons per minute pump, but there was also some discussion about using something bigger, and possibly using two or more, and possibly using larger hoses if it was going to be a larger pump. I have a lot of questions, I know, but we have a lot of questions.
So those are all great questions. Typically, public comment, it's just a comment, it's not a question and answer. But I think some of those questions, we might be able to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And we wanted to thank everybody for all the work that they put into getting all of this approved. It's been a long, arduous process, there's been a lot of parts to it, but we certainly do appreciate all the work that everybody has done in getting to this point. We look forward to getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Any other comment, the audience? Any comment online? All right, if there's no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
I'll second that.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I think there's a delay.
There's a delay.
All right, you got Sean, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all. Have a good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Sean's killing me all night.